Good evening. The July sixteenth meeting of Longview City Council is now called to order. Tonight's meeting is being conducted via teleconference. Thank you for your understanding. We'll have roll call. Due to the format of this meeting, we'll begin tonight with a roll call to confirm all members of the city council are present, able to participate in our considerations. Councilmember, when I call your name in district, will you please respond with an affirmative to your presence? District one, Ed Moore. Mr. Moore?
Ed, you're muted.
I know Mr. Moore is here because he's spoken earlier. So, Mr. Moore, could you unmute your microphone, please, sir?
I'm sorry, Ed. The whole screen just went dead. But yes, I'm here.
Okay. District two, Ms. Snotty?
Here.
District three, Mr. Wade?
Present.
District four, Ms. Ishihara?
Here.
District five, Mr. Wright?
Here.
District six, Mr. Pertle?
Here.
Well, now do a roll call of city staff. City manager Keith Bonds?
I'm here.
City attorney Jim Finley?
Present.
City secretary Angie Shepherd?
Here.
Thank you all for attending our tonight's meeting. We're now at reach the citizens' comment portion of our meeting. Those wish to participate in citizens' comment tonight, we're invited to access this meeting through a link to register with the teleconferencing applications. Sean here, the city's media and tourism manager, will moderate the citizens' comment portion of our meeting. When you're called to speak, you'll be unmuted and given one opportunity to speak for maximum of three minutes. Please start by saying your name and address for public record. Sean, do we have any residents who want to speak tonight?
Yes, we do have one individual that is logged on and here to speak, Mr. Edward Boone. He has called in, so we're going to try to connect him now. All right, Mr. Boone, you are unmuted.
Yes. My name is Edward Charles Boone. I live at twenty-nine thirteen Swan Street, Longview, Texas, seven-five-six-zero-four. First, I want to say that I am a veteran of the United States Army. But my wife and I are victims of white collar crime in the eastern district of Texas court system that resulted in our identity being stolen by the city, state, and government entities in the city of Longview. There was a address, fraudulent address created with the Internal Revenue Service by the postal service on South Marbly. Then the Social Security Administration here on Clinical, Clinical Drive, I believe, and the H and R block in Glade Water, Texas, and Jackson Hewitt, Longview, Texas, and Liberty Tax Service in Longview, Texas. Our identity was stolen, but my brother Pastor David E. Boone Senior and Yvonne U. Boone are reaping the benefits. Their address is thirteen forty Will Smith Road, Texaco County, Texas, seven-five-five oh one. And that's the same address that the Internal Revenue Service says is a community property debt which I own. But we are the ones who are being treated like the suspects. We have a police report from the Longview PD that says he stole my identity. He was drawing social security disability and unemployment in the state of Arkansas. But nothing has been done about it. But we're the ones who are being treated like the suspects. And that's not fair to us. We try to abide by the law, and we're model citizens. But due to what has happened, we're being treated like we're criminals.
Seconds remaining.
When actually, they're the criminals. Excuse me?
I just said you have twenty seconds remaining.
Oh, okay. But we're being harassed. We're being threatened to be arrested, saying we're harassing them. And we're being harassed by our next door neighbor in an attempt to get us arrested so whatever they have planned for us could be carried out. And we're just asking to be treated fairly.
Mr. Boone, your time is up, and I appreciate you bringing it to the city council. We will have someone from the city contact you and see if we can't resolve this issue. Okay, sir?
All right. I thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Wanting to, any other speakers for citizens' comment?
There's no one else that is logged on at this time. We do have others that are logged on to be able to speak if needed on other agenda items.
Okay, we will move on. We're now at consent agenda. All of them, consent agenda we consider together unless there's an item council member wishes to pull off for separate discussion. If so, please indicate so at this time.
This is Kristen. I make a motion to approve.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Moore that is seconded?
No.
Who's second?
Steve.
Okay.
Steve Pertle.
Perfect. A motion and a second. So we're now at the roll call vote. I'll ask each one of you in turn to indicate by voting either yes or no. District one, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
District two, Ms. Snotty?
Yes.
District three, Mr. Wade?
Yes.
District four, Ms. Ishihara?
Yes.
District five, Mr. Wright?
Yes.
District six, Mr. Pertle?
Yes.
Mayor Andy Mack, vote yes. City secretary Angie Shepherd, would you please confirm the record of the vote?
Yes, sir. Motion was made by Christian Ishihara, seconded by Steve Pertle. Consent items passed, seven zero.
Thank you. And now move to our budget item. I have a presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget for the city of Longview. This item was presented by city manager Keith Bonds. Mr. Bonds?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I appreciate this opportunity to present the budget this year. It's my third one to be able to do so, and really proud of all my department heads and the division managers who have continued with their efforts to deliver services to our citizens at reasonable cost. And I especially want to thank the budget team, Mary Ann Miller, Angela Coe, and Sean Hare, have helped me out the last couple of months, and they've really worked hard and I'm proud of this budget that I'm going to present. So first, go over some assumptions that we had going into this budget season. And the first being, not a big surprise, our economy has been very negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, and we are anticipating a multi-year budget impact. Our sales tax revenues have been down significantly. We have received preliminary property value estimates of up one percent. Our certified values don't come until July twenty-five, but we are not anticipating asking for a tax rate change in any way. Revenue losses from other fees and fines are going to be down as well. We have been assisted by the CARES Act with funding of approximately $4.5 million, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We have assumed that we were going to reduce expenditures across the board and use some available fund balances during this recovery period. We are also going to propose a delay in the needed rate increases for water sewer and sanitation services. So this year in review, entering March of this year, everything was looking really well. We finances were in overall good shape. Our sales tax collections were up 4.2% every month to that point where it had been up compared to the year previously. Our property tax collections were on schedule, which they usually are. Our expenditures were all in line with the budget, but on March sixteenth, we got the news that the schools were going to close till the end of the year after spring break. On March twenty-fifth, our local shelter in place order had taken place. A week later, the statewide stay-at-home order had taken place. And it wasn't until April twenty-seventh where Governor Abbott announced the phase-one reopening. Some of the other things that occurred after that, we had estimated our sales tax loss to be almost $2.4 million. Our other revenue losses from fees and fines are going to be around $1.275 million. And we instituted a hiring freeze in March, which has now built twenty-five positions currently. We did eliminate a street paving project, which is valued at $1.2 million. We eliminated the Guthrie Creek Trail parking lot project, which was valued at $300,000. Again, we had cut spending across departments, and we did receive our first installment of the CARES Act funding of $898,000. This diagram shows the sales tax comparison month to month. And you can see in October, November, December, January, February, March, we're all up. And it wasn't until April we saw a downturn. In June, we saw a 23% downturn, but in July was only 3.47, I think. But we have conservatively estimated August and September collections to be down significantly. So this is a slide that we've shown several times over the period of years. So some of the council members may be familiar with how this looks. But this is the year-end estimate for FY twenty. So this time last year, we thought we were going to have a beginning fund balance on October one, twenty nineteen, of $15.571 million. But after everything was over and after the audit was completed, we actually began the year October one, twenty nineteen, with a fund balance of $16.279 million, which was $708,000 more than we had anticipated. So if you take the revenues that we had anticipated this year, and we went ahead and added the $898,000 of care funds, we thought we were going to have $71.1 million. However, it turned out to be, even including the CARES Act funding, only $67.498 million, which is 3.6 below. So in turn, expenditures, after we added in the encumbrances, we had planned to spend $74.8 million. However, I think we're going to end up spending only $71.1 or $3.7 million under budgeted expenditures, which you can then see added to a surplus in the overall budget. So we're going to end up with more in the reserve fund that we had anticipated, $12.669 million. So this is what we're proposing for FY twenty-one. So you can see in the middle column, the $12.669 million would be our beginning fund balance October one, twenty twenty. And our revenues, we are hoping to be at $71.391 million. However, I'd like to point out that 3.6 of that is CARES Act funds. However, our expenditures were going to be at $72.166, and I'll talk a little bit more about why the expenditures are more this year than the year-end estimate from last year. So the ending fund balance is the thing to look at. The bottom right-hand corner, we're going to use $775,000 of the reserve fund. So we added seven seventy-five last year. We're going to use seven seventy-five this coming year. So we're about in the same position, which is still pretty good, looking at the $4.676 million above the 10% minimum. So we'll talk a little bit about how we got to those numbers. Now, this is the sales tax comparison year to year. So this is like a ten-year window. You can see that our low year is in twenty seventeen at $19.435 million, $19.485 million. While our high was $22.746 million in twenty nineteen. So you can see our projections for next year, not as strong as what we thought we were going to be this year, but still at $22.169 million. Property tax revenue, our current budget proposal includes this estimated 1% increase. And again, those are the preliminary values from Greg County appraisal district. Our certified values be available July twenty-fifth, and we're certainly hopeful that they have had a conservative preliminary estimate, and that the certified values will be more than 1%. But nevertheless, due to Senate Bill Two, we're capped at a maximum of 3.5% increase without voter approval. And I'd like to point out that these property values, the FY twenty twenty-one taxes values are based on pre-pandemic property valuation. So we anticipate FY twenty-one, twenty-two property valuations to decrease for the non-residential properties. So our property tax revenues are estimated $32.883 million. This includes maintenance and operations and the debt service. And you can see how the property taxes continually go up. It's a 3.19% average increase over the past ten years. So this might be a familiar chart as well, the matchstick chart. And you can see this is our overall property tax rates. The only increases you'll see over the last ten years have been due to voter-approved general fund bonds and their associated debt. So the change in twenty fourteen and the change in twenty twenty were all due to those bond elections. So it's currently at .5589 or 55.89 cents per hundred-dollar valuation. I would like to point out that due to the bond debt refunding recently, we were able to decrease the portion of the rate attributed to debt from .1747 to .1673, which allowed us to increase the M and O from thirty-eight forty-two to thirty-nine sixteen. So overall, the rate is still going to be 5589. So this is the general fund revenue pie chart. Forty-five million dollars or so is from sales and property tax, or 63% of the budget, and that's typical what we see here in Longview. This is the, a little detail of the CARES Act revenue. We're eligible to receive $55 per capita or up to $4.5 million overall. We plan to utilize this for expenses associated with public safety personnel responding to the pandemic. We already have received eight ninety-eight and plan to see the remaining $3.6 million in this coming up fiscal year. So some highlights of the expenditures, number one being the healthcare expenses have increased 8% this year. We have our normal inflationary increases over our operations. Our information services are going to increase $296,296. It's kind of an interesting number. But the general fund is going to see a new expense this year. We're required to lease our fiber optic network from the local cable company. And we're also going to see some major upgrades to some computer infrastructure in the police department, as well as in other general fund areas. We have a $200,000 extra expense to the Greg County jail contract this year. And as I mentioned, we cut the paving project out of FY twenty, and so we're going to build it back into FY twenty-one of 1.4 million. Now, this is half of the $2.8 million requested by the Public Works Department, and will obviously leave us a year behind in our maintenance. So some of the other things that we removed from the budget, some unfunded budget requests, we removed a ladder truck from the fire department, $1.302 million. However, we are going to look at some loan options that certainly would allow us to have the truck, but have a much lower cost, especially the first year. And we have unfortunately have to cut the Guthrie Creek Trail parking lot once again, as well as some playground replacement projects. And we're going to do no drainage project this year. So the general fund capital expenditure line item, even though we budgeted $2 million in twenty twenty, we are only going to spend 1.6 million. You can see a big drop, only $524,000 next year. So I'd like to remind us all that personnel is 72.6% of the general fund expenses. So it's very difficult for us to move the needle much in cutting expenses in the general fund without cutting personnel. So we're going to continue our hiring freeze. We're going to freeze vacant positions as they become available this year, except for the uniformed officers, certified police, fire, and public safety communications. As those positions become open, we will refill those. So four of the previously mentioned twenty-five frozen positions have been currently cut from the budget, and the remaining will be frozen as long as we need to keep them that way. So estimated savings of these frozen and cut positions is $1.152 million. We're proposing no changes to employee pay. However, the public safety employees will receive their regular step increases. So the health fund, we made significant changes back in FY eighteen nineteen, where we added the health savings account alternative, which we attracted 36.8% of our employees to take advantage of that. We also increased the city contribution employee premiums at that time. The fund balance has been improved to over $2 million because of those changes. So some highlights for this year, we're going to save $247,000 in third-party administrator fees, $288,000 in prescription drug rebates, $40,000 in life and disability premiums, $30,000 in savings to wellness program. However, we're going to see a $170,000 increase in cost to stop loss premium. And we're projecting a almost 1.5 million or thirteen and a half percent increase cost for medical down on prescription claims. So due to those fluctuations of charges in the health fund, we're going to need to increase the city's contribution by 8% so that we per employee change from $10,850 to $11,705 or $525,825 increase in the general fund. We're going to have no increase in employee premium. Again, Senate Bill Two says that the total compensation for first responders may not be reduced for this year, and insurance premiums count towards the total compensation calculation. So no change in employee side or the premiums. We are going to make some small deductible increases for both plans, and we're going to continue to provide a $500 per employee incentive for those that will take the HSA plan. Our one-time capital expenses is a very short list this year. One item, the enterprise resource planning software payment three of four, $400,000. This is a bar chart where we've used over the past few years, where we indicate in red the 10% minimum council-adopted reserve fund, 10% of the expenditures. The blue indicates a portion of the reserve funds that is available to be used, and the green is the portion that actually was allocated by councils during those years. So that shows the last nine years, with twenty fifteen being a large use of reserve fund, as well as last year we used 3.1 million, but we didn't use all 3.1. We ended up only using, we saved 775. So the 775 shows the small green portion that we're proposing in the twenty twenty-one. So overall, again, general fund expenditures, seventy-one, seventy-two million, one sixty-six. Forty-six point nine percent, forty-six point nine million budgeted for police and fire, which is 65% of general fund. Pretty typical what we see. So again, this is the repeat slide that I showed earlier, where it shows bottom right-hand corner dipping into the reserve fund, 775,000, which is again about the amount that we placed in it last year. So I'd go over a quick update of the twenty eighteen bond election. So November twenty eighteen, voters approved 104.21 million. We've only issued 51.325 million of that. So the public safety side, police station, we're final design. We're almost ready to bid this and hopefully get started in bidding in August. Fire Station Five received bids July, yesterday, day before yesterday, and really turned out really well. I think everyone will be excited about that. We'll award the bids August sixth. Police Fire Training Center, final design underway, and we have filed out the property and received it from Lead Co. at the business park. So on the street portion of the bond, we're all under design. High and Marbly entryway is under design, as well as Cotton Street. Streetscape project, Fairmont Railroad have the utility project sections of, portions of those projects are being designed at this time. And parks-wise, Lear Park and the Citywide Parks Project will be asking council to award those projects this evening. Arboretum, the last phase construction is just now starting. Broughton Recreation Center is in preliminary design phase. And the Cargill Long Trail, we are still negotiating with a pipeline project and reviewing some options on that project. So the second phase, we will not be issuing any debt this coming fiscal year. We're going to hold off till FY twenty-one, twenty-two to get these other projects, to spin down on those a little bit, and we anticipate a tax rate probably in twenty-two, twenty-three, and maybe in twenty-one, twenty-two. We'll see what the dates, what the schedule is of issuing that debt. So the phase-two projects will continuation of phase-one projects, of course, and we're going to place Fire Station Eight into that and the existing PD building renovation. When they get out, the police department gets out of that building, we're going to utilize that building for some other city offices. So as I've previously stated, we're not proposing any rate increase this year for water, wastewater, or sanitation. But I would like to describe what we had to do to avoid these rate increase requests. So and also preparing for next year. So as everyone knows, the rates are set. Revenues cover expenses, and we really try not to have very many rate increases. So last one being last year at 2.17, and we had one in twenty fourteen, a little over 2%. We have delayed rate increases primarily due to savings related to decreased debt payments and refinancing of bonds. And our operating expenses, though, still continue to increase. So we have simply reduced project funding by deferring water and sewer line replacements just to meet the budget this year. This is a chart Mr. McPhee has built the last few years, showing ten-year trend in historic pumpage, and it continues to decline as our customers conserve their natural resources. So due to that, our customer affordability index is a little bit affected by that. This is an industry measure for relative appropriateness of rates. So the annual average billing divided by the median income is only 1.08% here in Longview, which shows us to be very affordable. So cash funding versus debt, we are continuing to try to cash fund capital improvement projects. And the utility fund could be debt-free by twenty twenty-nine. However, we see this debt coverage ratio continues to slip. And that is a ratio that you get by dividing your net operating income by your debt service. So the net operating income can only increase if we have more usage. Consumption goes up, or the rates go up, or the debt gets smaller. And so the debt continues to get smaller, but our income is getting smaller as well. So that's a, we'll have to continue watching that closely. This was the requested rate increase from the utility, 2.13%. As we said, we're not going to propose that. That rate increase would have generated $938,000 in additional revenue, which would continue, give them the ability to continue to cash fund necessary projects and to maintain some debt coverage ratio. But the delay increase, what we're going to do is we're going to defer some of these projects and some system management, maintenance projects, and utilize fund reserves for operations. And we're also going to have to consider utilizing some debt to conduct some necessary projects if we have to do some projects. So on the sanitation side, it's the rate history. We had a 65 cent increase back in two thousand eight, a dollar increase in twenty fifteen, a dollar twenty-five increase in twenty twenty. Current rates are $17.20 per month. So the sanitation group originally asked a couple of months ago for a dollar twenty-five increase to cash fund some capital improvement replacements or some trucks or truck bodies, and then that would also help them restore their fund balance. They had an option even at that time to reduce or eliminate the recycling program, which would require no rate increase. So to avoid the rate increase this year, what they're going to do is utilize a loan for capital equipment replacement. And we're going to continue the recycling program, but just to warn you that there might need to be a rate increase in the future. So overall city budget, bottom right-hand corner shows us to be 160, 660, which looks like $8 million different from last year. And it is that much less, but it's mainly due to the middle column there, our middle row, special revenue funds, where we have decreased from 33.687 million to 26072. And that's because we had a CARES Act fund deposit for the Longview Transit, 3.8 million or so. And I think Guthrie Creek Trail project grant from Tech Dot was a three million range. So that's the main difference. And the other funds went up and down a little bit, but that's the overall picture for this year on the overall city budget. So the calendar for the remaining part- So the calendar for the remaining part of the year, July sixteen is today, so we're going to set the public hearing dates. The next meeting is we August sixth. We're going to discuss the budget a little more, have the fee change discussion, a preliminary vote on the tax rate, three meetings unfortunately in August, the next week, the thirteenth, we're going to have a public hearing on the budget, public hearing on the tax rate, adopt the budget, adopt the fee changes and have a separate vote to ratify the the rate, then Thursday, August twentieth will be a council meeting where you will adopt the tax rate and hear from Leadco about their budget. So again, thanks for listening, sorry it took me so long, but a lot to cover there. And I guess if you have any questions at this time, I'd be glad to try to answer a few.
Thank you, Mr. Bonds. We'll be digging into this budget over the course of the next few council meetings, of course, but does any council member have initial questions or comments for Mr. Bonds at this time?
Yes, if you don't mind. Keith, we usually get the budget proposal from you later in July after our certified tax roll is released and it's this year it's earlier and we're having to base it on an estimate is, why is that?
Well, it's due to the the Senate Bill two requirement that if we go over three and a half percent over the property tax, it, the values, if we go over that much, it's called no new revenue. If the revenues go over three and a half percent, then we have to call an election. So the election would be in the November election, and I can't remember the exact number of days, but it has to be like seventy something days before that point where you have to call the election. And so that date is is mid part of 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 August, so we have to have you guys to approve the budget prior to that point in case you wanted to call an election.
Okay. So this this based on estimate is is going to be from now on due to Senate Bill two?
Best we can tell unless the unless the state government changes the rules, which uh.
Currently, thanks to our legislature, we're having to prepare our general fund budget based on incomplete data. Is that a fair statement?
I would say so, yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'll now get off my soapbox.
Okay.
Is, this is.
But Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore.
Say again, Mayor?
We we will have those certified values before we finalize the budget.
Right, right, right. And yeah. So next year's property value is based on pre-COVID numbers, January first, twenty twenty. However, you you do anticipate in the commercial, industrial, personal property categories that because of the downturn in the economy because of COVID, that we probably will see a lower tax base. And and I I tend to agree that 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 will take place. Just a comment, it's it's fortunate we're going to be considering a general bond refunding at this time tonight because it will give us some flexibility on our debt tax levies for the next few years. What I would like us to consider between now and the time we adopt the budget is to maybe adjust some of the principal payments in the refunding bonds to increase our savings in the early years, especially in fiscal twenty one twenty two, to maybe soften the blow, if you will, on a possible decline in the tax base. We we have the wherewithal to do that. And then lastly, I I truly applaud you and your staff for presenting us a budget without a tax rate increase or a water sewer sanitation increase. I know that could not have been easy at all. However, you you have presented us some options on the water sewer sanitation side. And is it is it an accurate statement that we can get by without those increases this coming year, but we're delaying the inevitable in twenty one twenty two and possibly larger increases? Is is that a true statement?
I would say that was a true statement, yes, sir.
Okay. So obviously, I haven't studied all the the copious pages of numbers you have in our budget book, but I will try to do that between now and the next meeting and then maybe I would like to to meet with you and your public works staff and talk about that if you allow me to do that.
Absolutely, anytime.
Okay, all right. Mayor, thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other council members have questions for Mr. Bonds at this time?
Good job, Keith.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want I want to just take a minute, Keith, to tell you and all the team that worked on this. I know we've all worked on it for quite some time and it's, you know, just when you think you're you're getting over the hump, you know, we had the the hard, hard budget in two thousand fifteen when I was first elected and we we've seemed to come a long way since then and then something like this happens and we're we're back scrambling again, but you know, it's 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 a product of the fact that we budgeted well for the last few years and we're able to bring a budget forward this year that has no tax increase for our for our citizens and able to maintain the services that we can that we can maintain at this time. I appreciate the hiring freeze, I know that's a difficult thing, but it's something that we have to do at this point in time in order to make this work. But I applaud you all, we have a long way to go on this budget, we'll have lots of questions, I'm sure we'll be asking over the next few weeks. But you know, at to this point, I can say I'm I'm pleased with the budget and I think we will be able to bring a budget forward to our citizens that will be very, very acceptable. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Well, now move to Act item A, consider all matters incident ready to the issue of sales of City of Longview Taxation Refunding Funds, Taxable Series Twenty Twenty, um, here by Long Martin and Hilltop Securities. Mr. Martin.
Good evening, Council, thanks for having me this evening. We prepared a quick PowerPoint presentation to go through what's available to you right now and and what this potential refunding is all about. And just the quick bullet points there are, this would refund a portion of the two thousand thirteen GO bonds that were were sold back in December of two thousand thirteen, or issued back then. Those were out at a great rate at the time, three point seven six percent. Right now, there's about twenty one point six million outstanding of those. The maturities, the bonds maturing twenty three through thirty three are callable, but not until June first, two thousand twenty two. So the tax laws have changed several years ago to where we cannot do tax exempt advanced refundings, but you can do taxable advanced refundings. And given current market conditions, we believe that the city has the opportunity to, even on a taxable basis, to save a significant amount of money. So this would be an advanced refunding, sold as taxable bonds, and so we'll call them the general obligation refunding bonds taxable series twenty twenty A. Richard, can you flip? Thank you. So as I said, despite selling taxable bonds, we believe that TIC or the true interest cost on the refunding bonds may be below two percent. This would provide savings of over one point seven million or roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year between now and two thousand thirty three. I believe Councilmember Moore suggested that maybe we adjust the principal installments, which we certainly can do. If you want, you can take the savings wherever you want, so you can accelerate the savings up into the first couple of years and then have less savings in the later years. So we can, we can put together whatever scenarios you guys would like, you all would like to see. All the savings that we're quoting here are net of all cost issuance, we always ask that, we always get asked that, it's this after the costs or where the costs involved and that sort of thing. So what happens with these bonds is the proceeds, after the bonds are issued and we close, they are put with the paying agent or the two thousand thirteen issue and held in an escrow account that's invest investable funds up until the call date of July, June one, two thousand twenty two. And at that point in time, they take those bonds away from the bondholders. So before you deny is a bond order that is known as a parameters or delegated bond ordinance that provides for four points that the issue would not proceed, the sale of the bonds would not proceed unless these thresholds are met. And those thresholds are that the true interest cost must be below two and a half percent. The maximum amount of bonds that can be issued is eighteen point eight million. The minimum threshold of net present value savings is seven percent. Right now, we project that at at a little over nine percent. And the reason that's higher than normal is because this is an advanced refunding, so you want to make certain that that usually set that threshold a little higher than when you have a current refunding. Remember, these bonds can't be called for another two years. And then the final maturity is two thousand thirty three, we not be extending any debt at all. So just cash flow savings, straight back to the taxpayer, showing you, there's the debt service schedule showing you your existing payments. Part of this was in the in the city manager's budget presentation, you see your, in the existing payments there going out all the way to two thousand thirty nine. And then we refund out those two thousand thirteen bond payments, twenty five, we we're refunding just the bonds maturing twenty five through thirty three, they make the most sense and provide the most savings. And if you look at the interest rates, those are taxable interest rates, not tax exempt interest rate, taxable interest rates going out to two point one two percent. And this was estimate on bond market conditions a couple of weeks ago. We've seen even more improvement since then. So all told, at the end, if you go to the far right hand columns there, you can see what ends up happening, the new payments versus the existing payments, and it's a difference of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. Happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Martin, at this time? If not, we'll move to a vote, entertain a motion.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Longview, Texas general obligation refunding bonds taxable series twenty twenty A and authorizing all other matters incident related thereto.
Have a motion, is there a second?
My second, Nona Snotty.
Thank you, Nona. So if motion is second, I'll conduct a roll call vote. Please, each council member indicate your vote by saying yes or no. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Snotty?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mrs. Ishihara?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Purtle, I think your microphone must be muted. Mr. Purtle, are you still with us?
He is still on, but you're right, his microphone is muted.
Can you un- unmute your microphone, Mr. Purtle? Can you unmute it for him, Sean?
I cannot.
Okay, I'm back. Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, as well. Ms. Secretary, would you please confirm the record of the vote?
Yes, sir. Special motion was made by Councilmember Ed Moore, seconded by Nona Snotty. Ordinance passes seven zero.
Thank you. Move on to Act item B, the resolution nominating Westlake Longview Corporation to the Office of the Governor Economic Development Tourism with the Economic Development Bank as a single enterprise project. This proposal qualified business site lies within the enterprise zone, as we thus discussed by Director of Development Services, Mr. Shirley. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Bonds. This project is to nominate Westlake Longview as an enterprise project. This is an economic development tool that allows local communities to partner with the state of Texas. It encourages job creation, retention and capital investment in economically distressed areas. Local communities can nominate new or expanding businesses as an enterprise project and approved projects are eligible to apply for the state sales and use tax refunds on qualified expenditures. The level and amount of the refund depends on the capital investment and the number of jobs either created or retained at qualified business site. Over the next five years, Westlake plans to invest approximately a hundred million in capital improvements, product expansion and maintenance at the Longview facility while also retaining the current one hundred and eighty eight Texas resident employees. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do recommend approval of the resolution nominating them.
Any question, Mr. Shirley, on this subject? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead.
Shirley? Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. David, uh, I do have a question for you. Westlake, so there, are they in the Longview city limits?
Yes, they're they're corporates are located inside the city limits and the way the program, it requires the the governing body of the city, if if located in the city or the ETJ. And so their 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 main offices are located in the city and then, of course, a lot of their facilities are right outside the city, however, they are in the ETJ, so they they do still qualify.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
This is.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Do you have a motion in a second? I will go through roll call vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Snotty?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
All right, guys. Yes, yes.
Mr. Purtle?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ishihara?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
I will, yes, as well. Ms. Secretary, would you please confirm the record of the vote?
Yes, sir. Motion was made by Councilmember Steve Purtle, seconded by Kristin Ishihara. Resolution passes seven zero.
We'll now go to Act item C, consider resolution awarding contract in the amount of seven point eight million to RLM Enterprises. DBA RLM General Contract for Longview for the construction of the project on its Lear Park improvements phase five, approval of deductive change order in the amount of one hundred fifty three thousand, resulting in contract price of seven point six nine eight billion dollars presented by Parks Department's Director and Mr. Karen. Welcome, Mr. Karen.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bonds. The master plan for Lear Sports Complex was published in nineteen ninety nine and you can see the original one here on the screen. For a number of reasons, it has changed significantly since this original version, but the major elements and visions have remained the same. Completing Lear Park was the number eighteen top priority from the two thousand and fifteen comprehensive plan, and that is one of the reasons why it was included in the bond package moving forward. So the there have been a number of phases in order to get to the point that we are right now, and we're especially thankful for thousands of volunteer hours and monetary donations to get us to this point. A number of contributions were made towards Kids View and many of you probably worked on that project as well as the Miracle League field that was most recently completed. So it is with great pleasure that that we get to near the end of this project as as we're rewarding phase five. As a reminder, phase five, phase five finishes out all the usable space within the city-owned property and includes two additional softball fields, two additional baseball fields, converting two soccer fields to artificial turf, lighting two additional soccer fields. The design also includes a natural surface trail, but will not be completed at this time as the funding available does not allow for its construction. Fortunately, we do have the the plans and designs for that, and so we are able to be able to to do that at some time and may be able to do that with some city crews for some significant savings. Bids were opened on June twenty fifth, we had a total of five bidders for the project. We're excited to to announce the the apparent logo was from RLM, who did a number of the phases of this project, including coordinating all of the volunteer work and efforts for the Miracle League. So we're really excited to be able to partner with them once again to be able to finish phase five, and we recommend approving the contract as well as change order one. Um, and we recommend approving the contract as well as change order one, uh, for total price of just under 7.7 million dollars.
Mr. Karen, I appreciate the presentation and I'm glad that we have a local contractor that, uh, was able to, uh, be awarded this bid. It's very nice to see this, uh, this Lear Park, um, phase five coming into play and, 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 you know, completing this project that started so many years ago. It's been a, a wonderful thing for our community, so I appreciate that and I appreciate your work on it, Mr. Karen. Council, any questions, Mr. Karen?
I, uh, Mayor Ed Moore, uh, Scott, how did the 7.698 million compare to our budget? I seem to recall it's basically right on budget. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, we had allocated some funds also for Jackman Splash Pad, which we'd spent, um, about a year and a half ago to complete that. So, yes, it, this, uh, there is some allowances in the contract they're awarding here. So again, if we don't need to utilize those allowances for soils or for, for unexpected items, we may be able to get that trail, uh, into the project. But all, all, all in all, we should be able to, to complete this under, or right at budget.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Karen, this is Dave Wright. Um, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I want to second the mayor's comments about, uh, using a local contractor. I'm extremely pleased that we were able to do that and especially in light of the current economic conditions. I hope we make, not just for parks, but everything else in the city, that we make every effort to, uh, employ local contractors for anything that the city does. Um, and as I said, I'm just really pleased that we were able to do it in this case.
Yes, sir.
Any, any other comments?
This is Ed Moore. I move to approve.
Second from Kristen.
Do you have a motion in a second? I will conduct a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Sadi?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Ishihara?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Pirtle?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Secretary, would you please confirm the record of the vote?
Yes, um, Ed Moore made the motion. It was seconded by Kristen Ishihara. Resolution passes 7-0.
Thank you. We will now move to Act item D. Consider resolution awarding contract in the amount of 4.2 million dollars to Heritage Constructors of Texaco for construction of project known as Citywide Park Improvements Phase One. Mr. Karen?
Yes, sir. Uh, the comprehensive plan listed improving existing parks is the number 19 top priority. And so again, we're excited to be able to, uh, move forward with this project. Uh, and what we did to identify the parks, uh, for the potential bond issue at the time was, uh, reviewed the existing master plan, looked at the age of the playground equipment, the condition of the park overall, the use of the amenities as well as the geographic location. So the parks listed here, uh, as well as Rollins and Spring Hill Park ranked the highest. Rollins and Spring Hill Park will be in the second round and will be in phase two of the improvement, uh, because the, the, the bond sale was split up in order to, to meet the, all the requirements. So phase one includes, uh, all the following parks and I'll review each of those, uh, real briefly. Lois Jackson Park, uh, will include replacing the existing playground and pavilion, installing a new playground and new pavilion as well as a restroom. McQuarter East, uh, will include improving the parking, uh, replacing the existing playground, installing a new one, installing a sand volleyball court, renovating the existing basketball court and constructing a new one. Patterson Park will include site and parking lot improvements, accessibility and a new playground. Spring, uh, Sprint Creek Park will include updating the trail, adding shade, replacing the playground and installing a restroom. Stanford Park and Womack Field will, will receive by far the most dramatic improvements. Now, the Stamper side will replace the existing pavilion, install a new pavilion and move the basketball courts as well as resurface those. In between Stamper and Womack is Bacon Street and that will be removed, uh, while improving and increasing the parking for Womack Field as well as Stamper Park. A new entryway in concession building will be built, uh, into Womack Fields as well as all of the football fields being properly graded, uh, and irrigation being included on them. Bids were opened on June 30th. We had two bids. Uh, we recommend awarding a contract to Heritage Constructors. And once again, this is, uh, right in line with what we had budgeted for this project.
Are there any questions, Mr. Karen? I, I would like to just say what a wonderful addition we're going to have to our park system. You know, parks are a heart of, of a community and it's great to see us, uh, doing the things that we're doing and especially to Stamper and Womack Park, what great parks they are to be able to upgrade those and build them up and, 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 and continue to build in this side of the town that needs, needs it so desperately and just a, you know, that's, that's the side of town where, um, a lot of us grew up. Nona and I, that's where we went to football games when we were young. So, you know, it's great to see that and I'm glad to see the community, uh, expanding around those parks because it's a, it's a huge part of our, of our community and our park system. Any, any other questions or comments on this, uh, item?
Uh, just to comment, um, Scott, I just wanted to, um, echo what Mayor Mack just said. It is exciting news, uh, to be able to, once again, see something happening in South Longview and something positive, um, like the parks. You know, it will allow us the chance again to, uh, start that gathering, uh, once we're past COVID, uh, and to utilize the park, uh, the way that it was meant to be utilized. So I'm excited.
Good to see him.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Nona Sadi?
Second?
I think we have motion in a second. I'll have roll call vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Sadi?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Ishihara?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Pirtle?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Mr. Secretary, would you please record the vote for us?
Yes, sir. Motion was made by Councilmember Nona Sadi, was seconded by Dave Wright. Resolution passes 7-0.
Thank you so much. We're now to our, uh, give you a COVID-19 update at this point. Um, go over some of the statewide restrictions that are going on. We continue to see more positive cases in Longview throughout the state. On July 2nd, Governor Abbott, on July the 2nd, Abbott issued an executive order mandating the wearing a mask with some exceptions. They also restrict the outdoor activity gatherings of more than 10 people unless local approval was given. Um, we strongly encourage everyone to follow these orders and adhere to the specific activity guidelines available at opentexas.gov. Um, I cannot stress to you how important it is to wear your mask. I know there are people that don't think that makes any difference, but, you know, science tells us that it does. And so, uh, a, as the mayor of the community, I'm asking you to wear your masks, abide by the executive order that the governor has issued us. Uh, we are doing our best to enforce this order in the most feasible manner possible. You know, we, we're doing what we've been instructed to do. First, we're giving verbal warnings, which everyone deserves a verbal warning and people should adhere to that verbal warning. But if forced to, we will have to issue signs and citations, but shouldn't come to that. We should be more responsible as a community, um, more responsible to our neighbors and to, uh, those around us. So, you know, let's, let's do what we can do to get this thing under control before more drastic measures are taken that are out of our control. This we can control. It's the one thing we know that we can do to help slow the spread of this disease. Even if you don't think it helps, we know it doesn't hurt. So swallow your pride if you have to put that mask on and let's, let's do what we have to do to get this thing out of our community as quickly as we can. Uh, with COVID tests, we have free COVID-19 tests that'll be available beginning Monday, July 20th at the Agriculture Pavilion at the Longview Convention Complex. Drive-up testing will occur from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM every Monday through Saturday and is expected to continue for several weeks, subject to change. Tests will be conducted via private vendor, ONU, on behalf of the Texas Division of Emergency Management, the City of Longview Emergency Management. Test results should be available 24 to 48 hours after testing. This is not an antibody test. Drive-up testing is free to the public and organizers are preparing to conduct about 300 tests daily. Registration will be available online or in person. A person does not need to have symptoms to be tested, but should bring some form of identification and have a phone number available where they can receive the results. Those participating are asked to enter their Longview Convention Complex from 100 Grand Boulevard entrance and follow the signs to the testing area. We continue to see rises in our numbers daily. We have more than doubled the cases in Longview over the last two weeks. Moving on from three, over, from 300 to over 700 cases in the last two weeks. Today, we were up 34 cases, 34 positive cases today, up to 728 cases in Longview. We had eight new recoveries today, which brings our total to 169. We still are at 14 deaths, which every death is, is a, is a sadness. And our hospitalizations were up, uh, up three today from 59 to 60. So we, we continue to see a rise in the numbers. Uh, the positives are continuing to rise and the recoveries are slow to come in and that's just a simple fact that people are not always going back to, uh, get their, uh, negative test because we don't have any way to make people go back and get a test. So if you have tested positive, do the right thing, go back and get your test to show your negativity, your recovery so we can count you as a recovery. Otherwise, it's just a number out there that we can't, uh, we, we can't correlate because we cannot list you as a recovered case unless you have a negative test. Just because you quarantined for 14 days, you feel better, does not mean we can count you as a recovery. So the only way to make those recovery numbers go up is to go back and have negative test results done that we can register as, as a recovered case. Um, our, our goal is to slow this thing down and, and keep our hospitalizations from, from being, um, overrun. The hospital, uh, utilization is, is the concerning part. As long as the positives are continuing to go up, we're going to have more hospitalization. Hopefully, the majority of those positives are people that are either asymptomatic or can recover at home. So as long as that's the case, we're, we're going to be okay. But when the hospitalization utilization gets to critical level, then we have issues we're going to have to take care of. So hopefully, we will slow this down. We will do the right thing. We will be safe and, uh, this will pass as soon as possible. So I appreciate you all being here tonight. Thanks all who are listening on, uh, on this teleconference. And, uh, until next time, uh, God bless us all and we are adjourned.